Seems painless.
I'm gonna do a fun one. I'll do a first thing in the morning. I have some stuff drafted. I just today. I don't know what. Yes. We're getting all kinds of here calls. Not for me. Monday. Something. Full moon. I don't, I don't know. They were, it was a day.
Yeah, I thought we could do a fun one. Nine thirty, we're here.
I think we're here until.
It's gotta be summer sooner than that.
Forty-five-ish.
Yeah, I don't know.
What you're gonna do with the other two.
I mean, they could maybe be.
Press.
Hey, let's, let's focus on.
That's true.
Press, staff members.
Eighty-nine or more.
They could be.
Choose their character.
I know.
Friday night.
It's supposed to be an honor to long.
It does.
Friday's gonna storm. That's great. But there's your crew.
And then I have.
Oh, it's green under on the cruise in.
It's not hourly, but it says.
Eighty-five percent.
Right, it's like, like.
I asked somebody.
Funny, but like, somebody like, you get it. Yeah, the CEO, the CEO.
There was a map kicking around on, one of those maps of the country that are interesting kicking around on Facebook. This one showed by state how many days ahead they can predict the weather.
She's running. She must. I mean.
Along the Gulf Coast, they can pick way out. They're doing a lot of good. Lot of rain. Like out in the middle of the Midwest, like in Kansas.
We said on the forum, because we.
How you like that? Yeah. Change the traffic. Sure.
We done.
You need to.
It's not something blocking.
So we, we covered ourselves.
Excuse me.
They're gonna fail.
Where are people? Wearing that.
For fun reasons, yeah.
I have seven. I don't. Nope, I just wrote it.
Okay, I think we're ready to begin our meeting. If we can have your attention, please. So we have completed a study session. Now we're ready to start our regular meeting. It's Monday, June 2nd. And Madam Clerk, could you call to order?
President Huffman.
Here.
Mayor Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Ensland.
Here.
Mr. Kessler.
Here.
Mr. Liddy.
Here.
Mrs. Pittenger.
Here.
Mr. Slagel.
Here.
Thank you. Next, we have the prayer for guidance and pledge of allegiance. We have Associate Pastor Kevin Gigu here from Christian Family Fellowship. Thank you for being here tonight.
Gracious Heavenly Father, tonight we see ourselves as people of body and soul and spirit. And we pray that you would energize us in all three of those categories of our life, that our joy would be full. Our life would, would have a fullness because we have that aspect in our life as well. And not just the physical, but the unseen as well. Father, we cry out to you to help us and be merciful to us, to be gracious to us and our families and our businesses. And we pray for Tip City tonight. We pray for every citizen, every non-citizen, every person, every visitor, every tourist who's in town. Every person that passes through, that they notice some special love here, some special attention here, some care. And so, Father, we thank you for the, the streets and businesses, for all the challenges that the council deals with, Father, that you would overflow some wisdom and insight, and that you would fill us all with great joy as we do a good work here tonight and in the years to come. So bless us in a special way, Father, and I pray tonight in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again. Next, in terms of our agenda, if any of our guests would like a copy of the agenda, it is at the entrance as well as a sign-in sheet. If you could sign into the meeting, that will be reflected on tonight's minutes. All council members have had an opportunity to review the agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any changes or comments on tonight's agenda? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll to approve the agenda.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mr. Slagel.
Yes.
President Huffman.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenger.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mr. Ensland.
Yes.
Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
Next, we have the minutes of the May 19th, 2025 City Council Work Session. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. Are there any changes or comments on the minutes? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote to approve the minutes.
Mrs. Pittenger.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mayor Rogers. President Huffman.
Yes.
Mr. Slagel.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mr. Ensland.
Yes.
Next, we have the minutes of the May 19th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes or comments on the minutes? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll to approve the minutes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mr. Slagel.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenger.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mr. Ensland.
Yes.
Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
President Huffman.
Yes. We have no presentations, proclamations, or awards tonight. Under legislation, we have an ordinance for second reading, an ordinance approving the final plat of the Maple Hill Cemetery replat. This was introduced by Mr. Kessler. Mr. Mack?
Yes, this ordinance will allow property owned by the Monroe Township trustees to be submitted, or, excuse me, to be subdivided on the north side of Maple Hill Road into two small lots and also dedicate right-of-way along Maple Hill Road.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Mr. Kessler, do you still wish to sponsor this?
Yes.
Are there any council comments related to the ordinance? Hearing none. The public hearing is now open. Would anyone from the public like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing no one. The public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, please call the vote to approve the ordinance.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenger.
Yes.
Mr. Slagel.
Yes.
President Huffman.
Yes.
Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Ensland.
Yes.
Ordinance six twenty-five.
Next, we have an ordinance amending 2025 appropriations and modifying the annual operating budget as a result of this action. This was introduced by Ms. Pittenger. Mr. Mack?
Yes, this ordinance amends the 2025 appropriations to move up the purchase of police vehicles from 2026 to 2025. We had engine failure in one of our patrol vehicles. The total amount of this appropriation would be $200,000 from the capital improvement fund.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Ms. Pittenger, do you still wish to sponsor this?
Yes.
Are there any council comments related to the ordinance? Hearing none. The public hearing is now open. If anyone would like to speak to this ordinance, please come forward.
We're on the operating budget, right? I'm just busy taking notes.
Yeah, we're on the second ordinance.
B.
B, yes, related to the police vehicles.
Abby Bowling, 861 Hawthorne. I just had a couple of questions that this is amended so that you have three new Ford hybrid police vehicles. Is that correct?
Yes.
So my question is, have we had any hybrid vehicles before? And are we sure this is okay? Should we buy a whole fleet before we even try one? And then the other one is, how do we charge them? Because the last I knew, we only had like two charging stations in this city. And they were just gonna let them die on their own. And, you know, are we gonna have an extension cord running out the door? So those were just a couple of ideas that came to mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mack, did you want to respond to questions or?
Sure, yeah. One on the, so these are hybrids. These are not plug-in electric vehicles. They, they're just hybrid vehicles. So, so there's the difference there. And one, while we have not had hybrid vehicles in the past, and Chief, feel free to step in too if you have anything else to add, but I, I, I know other police departments have had a lot of success with, with these hybrid vehicles and actually seen less maintenance costs over the lifetime of these vehicles. And that was part of the decision to, to move in this direction as well. Anything else, Chief?
Yeah, but ironically, after we, the cutoff date to purchase anymore is May 23rd of 2025. So we've already missed our cutoff date. However, we do have a signed agreement to hold these for us. So if we don't do this, we will not be able to buy any cars in 2026 until May of 2026. So it's kind of critical for us. And like I said, we're already down one car right now. We have a transmission acting up on another one. So we can discuss it at budget time, but trying to keep these cars five and six years is now starting to affect us on the backside. So that's why we're trying to get these three currently, and plus, we're gonna save about forty, I think it's $4,100 a car if we buy them now versus in 2026.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mack, isn't it true that since COVID especially, this?
Let me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If I can close the public hearing and then go back to council comments related to that? So would anyone else like to speak to this ordinance from the public? Okay, hearing no one. The public hearing is now closed. And then Mayor Rogers.
Sorry, everybody. I had a thought, and it's kind of rare for me. Mr. Mack, since COVID especially, there's been a bottleneck in how long it takes to get police vehicles. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
So you have to kind of, kind of plan. And, and we had, we had one vendor that was not able to come through after we had ordered one. Isn't that true too?
Yeah, we, we've had issues getting them in the past. It's been, it's been kind of a constant battle these last few years.
I thought I remembered that. Thank you.
Are there any other council comments? Hearing none. We'll go ahead. And Madam Clerk, could you call the roll to approve the ordinance?
Mrs. Pittenger.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mr. Ensland.
Yes.
Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
President Huffman.
Yes.
Mr. Slagel.
Yes.
Ordinance seven twenty-five.
Next, we have an ordinance approving the replat of in-lots 4451 and 4452. This was introduced by Mr. Slagel. Mr. Mack?
Yes, at the request of the property owners, this ordinance vacates a portion of existing stormwater drainage easement on two adjoining properties in the Cedar Grove subdivision. This easement vacation has been approved by the, the city engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Mr. Slagel, do you still wish to sponsor this?
Yes, President.
Are there any council comments related to the ordinance? I was wondering, is this the only area in that subdivision that is affected? Or will there be others?
Yes, no. So as, as, there's a, there's quite a few different stormwater easements throughout. This one, however, is, is rather large stormwater easement. In stormwater easements, property owners are not allowed to build fences or decks, that sort of thing. So due to its size and the fact that it wasn't holding water, they on their own accord went and hired an engineer to show that it could be reduced so then they could build what they, they wanted to in their backyard. So, and again, the city engineer approved this change.
Okay.
So, so no, we don't anticipate anymore, but this is kind of a unique thing just due to the construction of the subdivision and how large the stormwater easement came into their, their backyards.
Okay. I didn't understand that they hired their own engineer. I saw that our engineer had approved it. But also, I didn't want to run into a situation where multiple residents in a certain subdivision would come forward and want to vacate their easement as well. And we've already made, you know, taken action on a select few, and it may put us in a bad position.
Right. No, and this is a kind of a standard process. Not many people follow it through, or usually when they hire an engineer and spend that money, oftentimes, the engineer says, no, you can't. The, the easement has to stay. So, so I'll say, in my time, it's, it's unique that we've actually gotten to finish signing or able to, to go through with it.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other council comments or questions? Hearing none. The public hearing is now open. If anyone from the public would like to speak to the ordinance, please come forward. Seeing no one. The public hearing is closed. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll to approve the ordinance?
Mr. Slagel.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenger.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mr. Ensland.
Yes.
Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
President Huffman.
Yes.
Ordinance eight twenty-five.
Next, under resolutions, we have a resolution finding that the council of the city of Tip City has reviewed the submissions to be made to the Budget Commission of Miami County, Ohio, and authorized by said commission for the fiscal year 2026 in relation to the alternative tax document provided in Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.281, and approves the same. Mr. Mack?
Yes, so every year, the city is required to submit a tax budget to Miami County by the middle of July, showing fund balances with anticipated revenues, expenditures, and ending fund balances. Essentially, it's, it's a summary in nature as we're only halfway through this year and have to submit a budget for next year. But it's a requirement of the Miami County Tax Budget Process.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Would a council member like to sponsor this resolution?
I'll sponsor it.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any council comments related to the resolution? Hearing none. The public hearing is open. Would a member of the public like to speak to the resolution? Seeing no one. The public hearing is closed. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll to approve the resolution?
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mr. Ensland.
Yes.
President Huffman.
Yes.
Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenger.
Yes.
Mr. Slagel.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Resolution sixteen twenty-five.
Next, we have a resolution approving the construction and subdivision agreement for the Wawa subdivision. Mr. Mack?
Yes, this resolution authorizes construction of, of this, authorizes the construction agreement with Wawa. This agreement outlines the terms and responsibilities for Wawa to construct public infrastructure and road rate, roadway improvements identified in the traffic study that was completed.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Would a council member like to sponsor this resolution?
I'll sponsor it.
Thank you. A second?
A second.
Thank you. Are there any council comments related to the resolution?
I, I just have one. Has this, the, the resolution regarding the, the agreement, has that kind of been working in tandem with the other gas stations that are going in the same location? I'm surprised to see one and not the others kind of all of the same, in the same package.
Yes. Yes, they, they've worked together in, even in terms of the traffic study and things jointly, all three. And it's taken some additional time due to that fact. However, Wawa had their kind of onsite, you know, design, ready to go first and submitted. Wawa's gone through and, and done everything they needed to do. So we're bringing it forward. We do anticipate to bring the others here in the near future as well.
Now, are some of the things that Wawa is responsible for that was going to be shared by the other two gas stations that are moving into that area?
Yes, they're working together, all three gas stations, the traffic study, some of the utility extensions, and some of the roadway improvements.
Okay, so those will be reflected in those agreements as well?
Correct.
Okay, and apportioned according to?
Yeah, and that's, that's between those private entities. The city's not involved in those deals, but yes.
Well, I guess that raised the question, what about enforcement? Should there be a failure in that private agreement? But when it is considered with utilities or the roadway, how is the city involved then in terms of enforcing that?
I'm gonna, Matt, can you answer that question?
Sure. So the city requires 110% surety of the approved engineer's estimate. So the city will retain that not only during the entire construction period, but then in additional 10% of that amount for an additional year beyond the construction to make sure that all the, any, anything that might happen to be failed would still be covered under that sort of one-year warranty period.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there any other council comments or questions? Hearing none. The public hearing is open. If anyone from the public would like to speak to the resolution, please come forward. And then, if you approach, if you could give your name as well as an address, we'd appreciate that.
Certainly. I'm Patrick Warnament. I work for Wawa, 260 West Baltimore Pike, Wawa, Pennsylvania, 19063. But I live in West Chester, Ohio. We're committed to, you know, doing this in a safe and effective way. We've submitted bonds to ODOT and to the city both to cover what Matt just spoke about. And we're very excited to be here. You know, you've probably seen things in the news about Wawa in various parts of Ohio. So we're certainly committed to doing everything the right way here and excited to be here. If you have any questions for me, I'm certainly happy to answer them. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you being here. Would anyone else like to speak to the resolution? Seeing no one. I'll refer back to the council. Does council, any council member have another comment or question? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll to approve the resolution?
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenger.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
President Huffman.
Yes.
Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Ensland.
Yes.
Mr. Slagel.
Yes.
Resolution seventeen twenty-five.
Next, under ordinances for first reading, we have an ordinance approving the final plat for the Wawa subdivision. One lot, plus or minus 2.703 acres. Mr. Mack?
Yes, this ordinance approves the final plat for the Wawa subdivision. The final plat dedicated public right-of-way for the additional roadway construction, as noted in, in our previous discussion, and also as a requirement of, in the results of the traffic study. Also, the planning board has recommended the approval of the Wawa subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Would a council member like to sponsor this ordinance?
I'll sponsor it.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. So we have nothing tonight under motions, nothing listed under miscellaneous, unless, Mr. Mack, do you have anything to add to that?
I do not.
Okay. Citizen comments on items not on the agenda. Would anyone like to come forward and speak?
I would like to kind of address the issue of public notifications and, and getting like the zoning board of appeals information, or the plan board information, or how it's posted. One example is, I checked your agenda for tonight, and on the website, I was expecting you to okay an $834,000 fire truck. So I'm sure it's a mistake, but according to the website, that's what you're doing. And this is not what you did. So probably you need to compare and have adjusted the agenda, maybe? I, I don't know. That was just kind of a fluke. I'm going.
Well, usually we don't comment back, but I know.
Right.
Ms. Bates did say there was an error by the.
Right, but I'm saying it was published and as, you know, I'm assuming that's gonna happen. So, you know, some way, check some balances on that. And then the other thing I would like to talk about is when I was looking at the zoning board of appeals, somebody sent me a notice, and I thought, oh gee, okay, it's on the agenda. And so I went back on the ordinances, and it says they'd have to have a 10-day notice, and it has to be in a newspaper. And then I was informed that, no, you don't post anything in the newspaper, that you'd post it on the website under public notifications, which is all nice and good, but I've been on that website a lot. I never knew it existed. So I guess I would like you to at least make it a little more prominent for people to find. We have a project that has a big button and everything else, and it's just a map. So maybe the public notifications could be a little more prominent so people could find it and look at it and say, oh geez. You know, maybe that's something I'd be interested in. And, and especially since I discovered on the zoning board of appeals, they will only notify adjacent landholders of the appeal. So as a public, the only way I know what's going on is through public, you know, through a publication, a public notice. And even if I request that they send me notification, they won't do it in the mail. So I just think you need to take a look at that and make it a little more prominent, make it, you want people to be involved. I think they need to know what's going on, and I think that would be helpful.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments.
Okay.
Also, if you, Ms. Bates, if you do have specific questions, she could send that information to you to address the specific things that you raised, if you'd like her to do that by email to respond to those comments. But I think that your points are very well taken. We appreciate that. Yeah, no, I appreciate you being here. Thank you. Are there any other citizen comments? Hearing none. Do we have comments of council members? Mr. Slagel?
None tonight.
Ms. Pittenger?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Ensland?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Liddy?
Just wanna say, summer is upon us. I just went and sweated for an hour down at the library. It's a great event. There are great events happening over the entire summer for not only adults, but all of our little ones. Just have a happy summer, everybody, now that it's here. For all the parents, try to stay sane over the next three months. And just happy that we are finally out of the long winter that we have gone through.
Thanks, Mr. Liddy. Mr. Kessler?
Yeah, I would like to express my appreciation for a past police chief. Dick Perk passed away last week. He was a police chief here in the late 60s, early 70s. He was kind of instrumental in giving me guidance in the direction I should take in my life, if you will. He was, he was a good, he was a good man. He's the one who brought, he brought Ron Ray here, and all is no wrong. And so I, I expressed my condolences to the family and stuff of Dick Perk, because he was, he wound up being a good friend of mine overall. And I guess school is out, or will soon be out, so be careful on the streets. We know the kids are gonna be out running around riding their bikes. Try to be patient. And then, again, random acts of kindness, open a door, smile at somebody, make, make their day good, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Mayor Rogers?
Everyone, hopefully will enjoy the, the cruise in Friday night. I hope we have good weather for it. And keep an eye on that partnership counter. There's fun stuff going on downtown. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. So I want to say, welcome to Wawa. Sounds like that has been in the works for a long time. And so I'm glad to see their business coming to the city and wish them well in the development. And I believe the pool is probably open now for business if the weather, rain holds off and it gets warm. So there should be pool passes and, you know, good times at the pool this summer for everyone. I don't have anything else. Mr. Mack, do you have anything?
Yeah, just a couple of things. One, on the pool, yeah, we had an opening weekend and, you know, very low attendance. And also, just on the uptown development, you may have noticed all the. And, uh, also, just on the uptown development, you may have noticed all the, the continued work there at the plaza, the paving and, um, some of the concrete work, all that continues and, and is really, you know, looking much better, so, uh, and, and then just a note on that development process, we plan, we hope at the next meeting to, to have a discussion about just schedule and what that looks like, a little more detailed information as a study session next meeting.
Okay, that's good. And everyone is welcome to attend study sessions as well as meetings. They just, um, begin before the meetings, and those times do vary, so check the agenda where at the top, it should have the start of the study session. So I think for tonight, we're done. If someone would like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you call the vote to approve adjournment?
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mr. Slagel.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittinger.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mr. Insland.
Yes.
Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
President Huffman.
Yes, we're adjourned.